City Council of the City of Cottonwood, Arizona will be held February 6, 2018 at 6:00 PM at the Council Chambers Building. First up is roll call. Deputy Clerk, please.
Councilmember Althouse.
Here.
Councilmember Norman.
Here.
Councilmember Hargie.
Here.
Councilmember Henry.
Here.
Councilmember Pfeifer.
Here.
Pending by phone. Vice Mayor Allen.
Here.
And Mayor Olensky.
Here, thank you. Please stand and join me in the pledge.
(inaudible) 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 (inaudible)
Okay, up next is a brief summary of current events by the mayor, city council, and/or city manager, and the public body does not propose, discuss, deliberate, or take legal action on any matter brought up during the summary unless the specific matter is properly noticed for legal action. Any council members have something to share? Please.
Yes, just a couple of items. The, a couple of highlights, actually. The annual Chamber of Commerce installation dinner was just this last week, and Mayor Olensky, Councilmember Pfeifer, and Councilmember Norman attended, as well as myself. Councilmember Norman was awarded the Outstanding Volunteer of the Year, and as an[120.42][120.42](applause) As an outgoing governing board member of the Chamber of Commerce, it was nice to be able to interact with some of the new governing board members, such as Superintendent Stephen King, and some of the returning board members as well. Another highlight was the open house of the Cardiovascular Research Center at Verdi Valley Medical Center. It opened this last May of 2017. I did bring a pamphlet about the research center if anyone would like more information. Cardiologist Dr. Sam Butman handpicks research projects that will help and are in line with the health needs of our community and our demographic. And it was interesting to hear from clinical research nurse Alicia Bigelow. She explained some of the current projects and how the research helps provide better medicines and treatments for cardiovascular disease. So, I felt, you know, walking away from that open house, that it is a great asset to our community, and it was good to learn more about it since I really hadn't known that it had opened. So, those are just a few of the highlights of items.
Great, thank you. Anybody else?
I have a couple items. Attended American Legion Post 25 monthly steak dinner. Councilmember, Vice Mayor Allen and her husband also attended, so it was nice to have them The VFW had a flag raising ceremony on the 27th to honor Vietnam Peace Accord. A very nice ceremony. The thing I'm most proud of is the motorcycle community here in the Verdi Valley did a raffle for Officer Glock. We actually raffled a Glock gun for Officer Glock, which we were gracious enough to get donated by a distributor out of Prescott, and we raised $3,000 to help Officer Glock. We pulled that raffle on Monday, the 29th, at the police station, and Logan Roberts won that. So, sorry for those of you who bought a ticket. If you didn't get a call, you didn't win. And then, the last thing is, we've started the Thunder Valley Rally Committee back up and are actively planning for Thunder Valley Rally, so I am representing the council and the motorcycle community in that.
Good. Any other council members?
I was busy running around last week to quite a few events. Most of them, Councilmember Toska was present at as well. It was very nice to have her. At the reclamation, opening of the Cottonwood Water Reclamation, grand opening was wonderful, and I believe most of our council members were in attendance. It was a really nice event, and I was proud to be there. Friends of the Verdi River had a ribbon cutting last week to celebrate their 10th anniversary. It's hard to believe they've been around for 10 years at this point. They started with five people at a kitchen table, so they're doing a great job. Couple more things, real quick. We did a ribbon cutting for a caring place in which Councilmember Toska was also there. The caring place is a daycare facility that allows caregivers a little bit of respite, where you bring a senior citizen in or an adult that has some issues, whether they be mental or physical, and they take care of them. They babysit during the day, whether you just need to go grocery shopping, whether you need to take in a movie, where you need to do chores. It gives them a respite for just a little while from caring for that individual. It's great. We've needed that. We had one in town, and it closed its doors, so we're really, really pleased. And if you have a chance to stop by, it's such a cute facility. They made it very warm and caring and inviting for the people that go there, so stop by there. I'm gonna go ahead and let you take care of the Matt Force, if you don't mind, Doug. And we attended, I think somebody's already said, the retirement of Vanessa Ward, our library manager, and welcomed our new library manager, Ryan Bigelow. Wonderful event. She is such a caring individual. She had an amazing group of people there giving her a farewell, and those of you that didn't know her, you missed out because she's a sassy gal that had a great personality and always kept you on your toes. The Vineyards grand opening was last week as well. We've been looking forward to that for a few months now, quite a few months, and if you haven't had a chance to walk through their model homes, gorgeous, absolutely gorgeous. We're glad to see that it's on its way to produce, to provide homes for people, because I know anybody that's a Realtor out there knows there's not a lot of inventory out there for people that are looking for homes, and this is a great thing. And one more, Verdi Valley Humane Society had a fundraiser at Three Kings Casbah, just down the road here. It was a great event. They had some wonderful little pit bulls, little piddies with soft faces, oh, just soft faces, and some little tiny guys, and it was real successful. We had a lot of people coming and making inquiries, and some actually went to the shelter to go find something that was appropriate. So, thank you to Three Kings Casbah for opening their doors for that. Covering up?
Thank you. City Manager.
Well, as the Vice Mayor indicated, on Friday morning over in Prescott at the Hasiyampe Inn, Matt Force celebrated our 12th year in service and did a recap of each of those years and talked about the successes we've had and those kind of things. It was attended probably by about 200 people. A little tight squeeze, but it was a very nice event, and like I said, well attended. I'd also like to announce to the council and the public that the Cottonwood Public Library will be offering a free online resources workshop on Thursday, February 8th, from 11:00 to, from 11:00 AM to 2:00 PM, and there'll be a representative there who will demonstrate how you can access over 200 digital magazines and over 500 online continuing education classes for free by using your library card. So, that's a great resource to our community. So, thanks to our library for that. That's it. Mr. Mayor?
Vice Mayor?
Vice Mayor, I did have one more thing, and I promise you I'm not turning into a werewolf up here. I've got allergies, too, and it's just killing me. The, I belong to the Verdi Valley Leadership Program that has blessed a lot of individuals in our community, pushing them forward, helping them stretch and grow, and obtain leadership positions throughout our community. They initially were brought together because we have so many individuals that leave our community to get those leadership skills and then stay away, or we get leaders that come into town, and they're just not a good fit, and they lead. So, what we want to do is home-grow our leaders and give them those capabilities. One of the things the group does is a scholarship dance every year, and that, all the funds, all the profits made at that event go towards a scholarship for one or two children from the local high schools, Camp Verdi, Cottonwood, all that, everybody gets to put in, and then we pick one or two individuals, and they get a substantial scholarship to help them take that first step into college. That event is going to be happening on the 17th of February. That's a Saturday, and if you get online and look up the Patty Mae Open Your Heart to Youth, you can probably find out how, a little bit more information on that, but it's near and dear to my heart because it really helps out our youth that are trying to get those funds together to start college. Thank you.
Great. All right, we'll move on to call to the public, and this portion of the agenda is set aside for the public to address the council regarding an item that is not listed on the agenda for discussion. However, the council cannot engage in discussion regarding any item that is not officially listed on the agenda for discussion and/or action, and comments are limited to a five-minute time period. So, we have three folks that would like to speak to the council tonight. If there's anybody else out there that would like to address the council on an item that's not on the agenda, you'll find yellow forms in the back. If you could fill those out and hand them over to the city manager, we'll hear from you. So, first up is Nancy Coras. Good evening.
Hi. My name is Nancy Coras. My husband and I, Dave, have lived on South Willard for almost 50 years, and I'm here tonight so that you see a face regarding one of your decisions that you've made for the cold-weather homeless shelter. It's a wonderful idea to have a place for them. However, you've put it right next to a residence. There's almost less than 25 feet from our property to that, and it's just there, right under my dining room window. No matter the protection that's been offered by the police department and others, I just don't see how I am ever going to feel safe in my house with this homeless shelter right next door, particularly because no one seems to have an answer as to what is going to happen to these people when they leave in the morning. They can't stay there all day, so where are they going? Gosh, they're going right next door to me. I have a washout in front that we've already had trouble with people in over the years setting up homeless places, and so I can just see the writing on the wall. If there was some way that these people would be taken someplace else for the day or to another shelter or something for the day, but to just let them loose is just, they're gonna be in my yard and on my front porch and all over the place. I just know. We, according to the records, there's about three months where the temperature goes below 35, which was your designation of when the shelter would be open. Since this appears to be a rather warm winter, I don't think that you're gonna have much use for this shelter this year, but I'm hoping that that will give you time to find another place to put this, other than under my dining room window. I just hope that there's got to be another available place somewhere for this. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks for being here. Okay, up next is Lisa Kalof.
Hi. Thanks very much for letting me talk with you guys today. My name is Lisa Kalof. I'm resident of Jerome, and I use with my dog, your dog park, almost every day, and I want to say thank you very much for this dog park. I've used dog parks all over the country, and this is our favorite dog park. But I'm here tonight to talk about a bit of a safety issue. Recently, we've had a woman coming to the park who is unable to control her dog, so in order for her to catch it when she needs to leave, she has to leave a long leash or lead on the dog so she can step on it. But unfortunately, what happens is the dog runs around the park and creates a tripping hazard for the other dogs and for people, and it's kind of a danger to the dog himself because I'm afraid he's gonna get kinda caught on something and caught off guard. So, that's one reason that we need to not have leashes in the park. So, what happened was, I called the police eventually because she kept doing this, and he said, "Unfortunately, I understand the issue, but I can't do anything because there's not a rule that says there's no leashes in the off-leash park. If there was a rule, there was something I could do." So, he suggested that I write a letter to you, which I've done, which you all have at this point, and I've also provided some background information about why dogs should not be on leashes in off-leash parks. So, everybody's looking at me like you don't have my letter, but Matt? I provided the letter to Matt about a week ago.
Is it in our mailboxes, Matt?
Yeah. I did receive it. I think City Manager and I both received it, for sure.
Okay. Okay, so I assume it's coming to the rest of you. But anyway, basically what it's asking is to provide an extra rule to the dog park ordinance that says, you know, this is an off-leash park, please remove dogs, leashes, or leads when in the off-leash park. Now, one of the reasons is what I just described, but another reason is with the retractable leashes, when they go long out, dogs that are running in the park can be clotheslined by those leads. There are other dogs that are leash reactive, so when they see a leash even on another dog, it causes them to become a little frantic. And then, there's the other piece that when you have one dog on a leash around a lot of other dogs that are off a leash, that creates problems for the dog that's on the leash because he feels restrained. So, all of that to say, thank you for your time. I hope you'll read my letter and the attached information that I provided, and consider adding another rule to the dog park that says, "Please no leashes or leads inside the dog park." Okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And next, we have Joe Loughgren. Hope I pronounced that correctly.
That's good, close enough. My name is Joe Loughgren. I'm also a resident of Cottonwood, and I utilize the dog park every, every day here, and I just want to follow up with what Lisa said. I had another incident that she wasn't there to witness. I'm sure she would've, she would've really been upset if she had witnessed this other incident, but this person brought their dog on a leash, let the leash go, and besides that, brought a 50-foot rope to leash her dog inside the small dog area of the dog park. And I was able to convince her through some reasoning not to do that, but it just, I think it just illustrates the need for the extra rule that Lisa mentioned, and I hope that can get on the council's agenda. Again, I'd like to thank the city for that facility. It is one of the better facilities that I've seen. It's probably the friendliest dog park around, for sure. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Thanks for being here. Is anybody else out in the public that would like to address the council? No? Okay. All right, then we'll move on to the approval of minutes, regular meetings of December 19, 2017, and January 2, 2018, and the work session of January 9, 2018.
I have just a couple revisions to the minutes.
Sure.
On page 19 of the packet, page 7 of the minutes, causal should be spelled C-A-U-S-A-L instead of C-U-A, and then during the roll call of January 9th, the minute should reflect the presence of Councilmember Althouse as well.
Oh, yes.
I also have two additions. Wait till you're through there. I'm on, corrections on the one, January 2nd minutes, page 2, the call to the public. It's stated that something about off-site signage, it should be off-site signage. And then, page 4, the third paragraph, it's written that Councilmember Althouse stepped down from the dais, but it didn't explain why. Typically, I know we indicate that she had a conflict or possible conflict.
Okay.
Okay? That's it.
Any other corrections? And I would move that we approve the minutes with those corrections.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the minutes are approved. And then, we move on to the consent agenda. The following items are considered to be routine and non-controversial by the council will be approved by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen requests, in which case the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. We only have one item tonight, and it's permit applications for the Brian Mickelson Marathon, Town of Clark Delaue, Pike County, National Park Service, Arizona State Parks Board, and the USDA Forest Service. Any member of the council like to pull this item? Member of the public?
I have a question. Can I ask a question on it without pulling it?
Absolutely. Might just as well pull it, it's okay. Ezekiah Allen, would this be yours? Or Mr. Faust?
I just had a question on the funding. The cost in funding, it's, I don't know, $300 or $350. Is that Cottonwood's cost, or is that shared?
No, that would be our cost, then, for the permit application.
And is that in our budget?
Yes, well, that actually is in the budget for, we have a line item for Brian Mickelson Memorial.
That's it? That's all I just wanted to know.
Okay, great.
Then.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Can I make a motion?
Sure, please.
I move we pay the, oh, we pay.
Jump ahead.
I move we approve the consent agenda as written.
Second.
All right, Vice Mayor Allen made the motion, and Councilmember Norman seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, consent agenda is approved. Move on to new business. Item 1 is request by Gary Wagner, President and CEO of Rainbow Acres, to discuss sustainability of Rainbow Acres. Good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of the council. I'm going to defer to a citizen advocate to make her presentation this evening, and I'd like to introduce Mr. Joel Datar.
Mr. Mayor, Madam Vice Mayor, distinguished counselors and staff of the City of Cottonwood, I thank you for allowing me to speak to you this evening. As Gary said, my name is Joel Datar, and I've been a resident here for just as long as Rainbow Acres has. Came here 45 years ago, never left. Wouldn't say I have leadership skills yet, but I'm working on them, so. I find it interesting in my life that as long as I've lived here, that I never really understood what Rainbow Acres was all about. I did know that they took care of disabled adults, and they caretake for them, but I had really no idea what the facility was like and what they truly did over there. And if you have never been to Rainbow Acres, I encourage each and every one of you to stop by sometime, make an appointment with Gary. He's the CEO and President, as Mayor Olensky has stated, and he will give you a whirlwind tour that will fill your head full of thoughts that you never thought was happening over in Middle Verdi. It is truly a jewel to the Verdi Valley. Rainbow Acres has been a remarkable 501(c)(3) nonprofit in the Verdi Valley for 45 years. It began with just a few mobile homes and a couple of dozen ranchers under the directorship of Gary Wagner. Since 1996, there are now nearly 100 ranchers that call Rainbow Acres home. They live in site-built, modern, efficient, and green homes in their dwellings there. The founders of Rainbow Acres had a vision, this is a mouthful, so give me a break if I blow it, so. They had a vision to create an environment and a facility to empower adults who have developmental disabilities with the opportunity to thrive and grow to their fullest potential with dignity and purpose. Like I said, that's a mouthful, but it's truly a dreamlike vision for the people that started Rainbow Acres clear back in 1972. Rainbow Acres makes a personal commitment to every rancher that attends there, that once they're accepted into the community, they have a lifelong place to stay. As a result of that, it requires a variety of sources of incomes from their families, government sources, donations, personal donations, private trust donations, and church donations. It costs upwards of $40,000 a year to house a rancher at Rainbow Acres. Many of the ranchers outlive their parents, they outlive their caretakers, and their funding sources, so we're constantly in a battle to try to come up with enough funds to keep those people there for the duration of their life. That's part of the reason why I'm here tonight, is to discuss the sustainability of Rainbow Acres. We have a video. Matt, were you gonna play that for me? While I continue, I'd like you to watch a little bit of a video presentation. It'll let you focus on something other than my mug for a few minutes. It's about a three-minute-long video, and I'll speak during it, but I might stop before it gets to the end and let you watch the last of it.
You may ask Matt to turn the volume so.
Okay.
It's silent.
No volume. Yeah, it's just music. I'm not gonna dance for you.
I was promised that you were gonna dance for us.
I'm disappointed.
You wouldn't wanna see that, I'm sure, so. All right, while the video plays, I'm gonna inform you about a few of the major contributions that Rainbow Acres supplies and our impact on the Verdi Valley and Sedona communities. The first, and perhaps the greatest, impact is a clean, pleasant, safe, and nurturing environment for those who call this place home. Our ranchers have many pastimes to enjoy, and they learn skills from computers to equine care therapy, and from hobbies to weaving items such as American flags that they sell in the campus retail store. This gives them something tangible to hold with the knowledge that it's their very own creation and something that they can personally be proud of. They also have an onsite horticulture program where the ranchers have produced over 8,000 pounds of fresh produce to feed themselves in last year alone. The second item that they contribute is to the employment of the people of the Verdi Valley. They employ 68 full and part-time employees who provide the care and education to the ranchers. Of all these employees are paid more than the minimum wage. The advent of the minimum wage increase has had a major impact on the payroll of Rainbow Acres. We need to increase above the minimum government mandate to the wages of each employee to strive to keep those wages at a level that interests the best employees for the caregivers and the caretakers for the ranchers at Rainbow Acres. Compensation package for employment is comparable to that of the Verdi Valley Medical Center. We have medical insurance, we have vacation pay and retirement contributions, and are on a par with the major employers of the Verdi Valley with the benefit packages that are offered to our employees. And I'm just gonna let you watch this for a minute. Turn the music up if you want. An example of the horticulture program you're seeing now. Lot of smiling faces when you walk around there. Gary knows everybody by name. He will introduce you to them, tell you their backstory, tell you how long they've been there. Some have been there since the inception of Rainbow Acres.
And how many ranchers did you say you have out there?
There's nearly 100 that are full-time ranchers. There's a number that come in just during the daytime hours for the facilities and the programs that are offered. All right, I'm getting close. All right, Rainbow Acres has an annual budget of $5.3 million. The vast majority of these funds come from outside of the Verdi Valley/Sedona area. This means that we attract and bring into the community a great deal of new money each year that is fed into the local economies via wages, supplies, and the ever-expanding and modernization of our facilities. The overall impact of this base budget is nearly $25 million annually in the Verdi Valley/Sedona area when you consider the multiplier effect of our expenditures. We make it an obligation to use local tradespeople, suppliers, and almost exclusively to build, house, and feed our ranchers. We currently have 30 ranchers that work outside of our facilities. Sedona Recycles is one major employer. Bash's in Camp Verdi, and Safeway in Sedona also employ ranchers from the Rainbow Acres. They provide a partnership with our ranchers that allow them to earn their own monies while simultaneously giving those participating businesses valuable employees to fill their positions. What we're trying to do through this presentation is become a more sustainable facility. We're asking that each of you make a commitment to helping us in that venture. Whether you choose to join us as the council of the City of Cottonwood or on a personal level, I urge you to consider making us one of your financial commitments each and every year to maintain the sustainability of Rainbow Acres. Overall, this is a quote that was given to me by Claudia Alp, "Overall, the need for acceptance and accomplishment makes us share more similarities with the ranchers than differences." Thank you very much for your time. If you have any questions, I will probably defer them to Gary, but I appreciate your interest this evening. Thank you.
Thank you for being here, sir. Mr. Wagner?
Yes.
Would you mind stepping up and just have a couple of questions?
Absolutely.
So, are there other municipalities that help Rainbow Acres? So are there other municipalities that, that help Rainbow Acres?
We're, we're making an approach to several municipalities in this regard.
Okay.
And this is our first venture into this new form of, of sustainability, and so we appreciate this council's consideration.
Sure, okay. I was just curious if any other cities had...
Well, we, you know, Cottonwood Council could be the first.
That's a good pitch, that's a very good pitch. Okay, are there any other questions?
I, I would like just to add to one of Joel's comments. We have about eight or ten individuals from, from the local community that come half a day to a full day, five days a week sometimes, for the services we provide. And so we feel like we have not only an outreach where our folks come from twenty-one different states, but we have an outreach to our own Verde Valley community.
Right.
And it's a privilege to serve individuals from, from Cottonwood and this beautiful valley.
True. Well, thanks for being here. Your presentation is timely. We are working on our budget right now, so.
We were hoping we were on time. Thank you so much.
Very good, appreciate it.
Mr. Mayor, if I may, Joel or Gary?
Yes.
If one of you could send me an email, my email address is on the city website. Joel, as you know, we have our annual Frosty and Chili Run on, on January first, and we're always looking for a worthy charity. So I encourage you to come and present to the Modified Motorcycle Association and see what maybe we can do, the motorcycle community might be able to help out with our run next year. Can't guarantee you anything, you gotta, you gotta get buy-in from them all, but I'm certain...
I'll be heard, too.
I know, I know you always support our runs, and that's why I, I bring it up, because I know you were there this last year, so.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next is authorization to release the request for proposals announcement for the city's building community grant funds. Hello?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Jeff Kig, Contract and Purchasing Administrator for the city. What we have before you tonight is authorization for the release of a request for proposals which would invite applications for the fiscal year nineteen Building Community Grants Program. This kind of ties in nicely to the presentation before. The city receives many requests for financial contributions from a variety of organizations and program, programs that serve Cottonwood and the Verde Valley. The purpose of this Building Community Grant Program is to provide a structured application process to screen applicants and ultimately have a selection process and gives organizations an opportunity to apply. In the past, we've allocated ten to fifteen thousand dollars to the Building Community Grants Program, and I know we're not all the way through the budget process, so that is something that can be determined later as far as the actual budgeted amount. This is just an authorization to release the RFP at this point in time.
What participated in this process, I think one or two years, and I know Alt House now is participating, I think it's a great program that I think has a lot of room for expansion. So I, I, I think it's great, and I think we should try to fund, at least release the RFPs, we could discuss how much to fund, you know, during the budget process, but I know it has a great benefit to the community, too.
I agree.
Okay, any other discussion? Is it really that easy?
Yes.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Can I make a motion?
Yeah, please.
I move to approve the release of a request for proposals inviting applications for the fiscal year nineteen Building Community Grants Program.
I'll second that. So Vice Mayor made the motion, Mayor seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed?
Aye.
Motion's approved. Okay, next is a public hearing regarding the city's intent to apply for grant funding for the CAT Link's Transit Program through the FTA DOT Section Fifty-three-eleven Rural Transit Program. Mr. Morrow, how are you?
Wide awake.
Good.
Learned, ready, go. Mr. Mayor, Council, this is the kind of preliminary step to what is a long and arduous process, believe me. You've seen the document that I have to weed through every two years, and I, I enjoy it so much. But we have to go through this process, and it, it's, I don't have a document for you tonight because we haven't put it together yet. We, we need to discuss the whole rigmarole, why we need to obtain a grant from the federal government to run our transit system. The reality is, is it costs money to run the transit system. The budget for the last two years has been somewhere in the neighborhood of two point one million dollars. The city has not had to pay all of that because of the grant. So we are looking forward to the authorization for obtaining the grant once again. It's a two-year budget process now instead of the one year that we used to do, and so this is the year that we start it all over again. And I'm open to answering any questions you might have. I know some of you folks are new to the council and haven't been through this before, some are old hands at it, so. Any questions you might have, I'm open. Anybody that would like to know anything more? That's why I'm here.
All right, any questions from council?
Can you just discuss briefly some of the terms? It's my understanding from Mr. Rodriguez that these are matching grants, so we still put in a certain percentage of funds to match the grant?
That is correct. What happens most often is that because they are matching grants, the city is on the hook, so to speak, for approximately fifty percent of our operating funds, about twenty percent of our administrative funds. So we also contract with our, our good friends at Clarkdale, our very good friends at Sedona, and our friends at Yalapai County to also provide local grant, our, our local matching funds. Because we do provide service to Clarkdale and Sedona, and the unincorporated areas in Yalapai County, most notably the Verde Villages, so that we also ask them to provide funding for our services in those areas. And it's based mostly on the hours, the service hours that we provide in those areas, the amount that they are asked to provide in matching funds. So we don't end up paying the lion, well, we do end up actually paying the lion's share of those local funds, because we get the most service out of the CAT and Link's Transit Services.
Thank you.
What, what does the forecast look for the, how does it look for the Fifty-three-eleven funds? I'm just always concerned that, you know, we're really running this entire program on, on federal grants coming through, and if they didn't come through, then we wouldn't really be able to provide this service. So is there any indication that those grants will not be available in the future, or is everything still rosy and wonderful?
As with any federal program, it could go away anytime. Right now, it looks like they're, they're still projecting that we're gonna have funding for the next five to ten years.
Okay.
At least that's what I'm being told by other people that know more than I do about, and watch it very closely. We have folks that ask to watch it very closely. I'm a member of CTA, the Community Transit Association, that looks at it from a federal level. They're all saying that the funds are fairly solid for at least five to ten years.
Okay.
But who knows?
Right.
Politics and...
Right.
Funding can go away at any time. A lot depends on how they fund the, the federal transit, Transportation Fund. Everything seems to come out of, based on gas taxes and all the revenue that goes in there, so.
Yeah.
It's fairly up in the air most years, but they always seem to find a way, make sure the money is there.
Right. Well, it's a tremendous benefit to our community, I mean, it really is. It's impressive that we have such a great public transportation system.
Well, and I, I think the City of Cottonwood should be really proud of the transit system we have. When you look at, at not just Arizona, but other states, for a city our size to have the transit system we have, you should, you should be real thankful. You, you look at Prescott, Prescott Valley, they don't have a transit system, and they have four times the population. We have a transit system that, if the trend continues this year, we'll transport close to a hundred and seventy thousand people by the end of this fiscal year. That is pretty amazing. We're providing more service to more of the Verde Valley than we have ever before, thanks to our contract with the Verde Valley Caregivers Coalition.
Right.
We're, we're doing a lot of good service all over the Verde Valley. It's thanks to the support that you, the council, has given us, and we appreciate that.
Very good. Any other discussion from council? Okay, do you hear a motion?
There is a public hearing portion, Mr. Mayor.
Excuse me. Any members of the public care to speak on this issue?
You know, Mayor, councilmembers, I, I'd just add that most every transit system across the country is largely supported through grant funds, so if those dollars did begin to dry up, it would have a national impact that everybody would, would feel pretty significantly.
Yeah, I, no, I agree, I just, you, you know, we're lucky to be in such a rural area and have such a great transit program. I think we'd be impacted much worse. I think, you know, larger municipalities might be able to offset the, the impact some, but we wouldn't be able to. So. If there's no one from the public, then I'll go ahead and close the floor of the public to end the public hearing.
Make a motion?
Please.
I move to authorize staff to, to apply for Section Five-three-one-one Federal Transportation Authority funding through the Arizona Department of Transportation, ADOT, for the operation of the Cottonwood Area Transit, Verde Link's Transit System during the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty federal budget cycle from October first, two thousand eighteen through September thirtieth, two thousand twenty.
Second.
Okay, Councilmember Alt House made the motion, and Norman seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay, the motion's approved. And that covered item four, correct? Okay, so we move on then to claims and adjustments.
I move we pay the claims and adjustments.
I'll second that. Councilmember Norman made the motion, the mayor seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Okay. And then we move on to inward view of the city manager pursuant to Arizona statute, the council may vote to convene into executive session subject to the city manager's right to compel the council to discuss this matter in open meeting. We did send you the required letter, right, Mr. Bartasch? Yeah. And would you prefer to move into... Okay, then I would move to resolve into executive session.
Second.
Okay, Mayor made the motion, Vice Mayor seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Any opposed? Okay.
Back into regular session.
Second.
Mayor made the motion, Vice Mayor seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we're back in regular session. And to discuss the discussion of possible action regarding the city manager's employment agreement. Sure, yeah, I'll just say that we had it, you know, we met in session and discussed his performance and used our new forms to guide us, which was very helpful.
Extremely.
And had a good conversation, so thank you.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to continue Doug Bartosz's contract and move for 4 percent merit increase.
Second.
Councilmember Al House made the motion and Norman seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
Opposed. So it's, motion is approved. And thank you very much.
Thank you, council, for the input and the merit increase. Thank you.
Okay, next is adjournment.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
Okay, Vice Mayor made the motion and Al House seconded it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.